All right, so we're gonna get this meeting started. This is our March meeting and we are now less than a month away from the total solar eclipse, which is one month away from yesterday. And I hope everyone's gonna get very excited about that, because I am, even though it's my third total eclipse I'm gonna observe. So in line with that, we're gonna have another presentation eclipse oriented. So Darcy's gonna do the Astronomical League Total Solar Eclipse Challenge. And she's throwing down the gauntlet in two, three, one.
Okay, how many of you here have seen a total solar eclipse? Everybody? Almost, almost, you haven't. Okay, get ready. This is correct.
Okay, that's easy jumping on me. I thought that was a cat jumping on me.
Here.
I guess they had a plan. They had to be planned.
Okay, we need to mute somebody.
There's a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have a question? Cat? I think that was Cat.
No.
No? Okay. All right, well, during the presentation, if you wouldn't mind, please mute your mic.
Okay, hey, thank y'all a lot. This is an Astronomical League observing program. Have all of you done an Astronomical League observing program? Yes, no? Some are easy, some are more challenging, and this one has two levels. And we'll start with the silver level. I did the one for the annular eclipse in Midland. And it raised some questions for me. It was, it was fun. I enjoyed doing it. I felt like I had accomplished something. It starts off with you have the basic things that you need to know about solar observing. This is the only inherently dangerous thing you will do in astronomy. So you have to be sure of your equipment and that you have, you're totally familiar with safe solar viewing. And you have the basic things of recording your location, latitude, longitude, times, dates, all the equipment that you use, those things are standard. And it goes into a series of 15 questions. Yeah, did you use?
Stay close to the microphone.
Right, in the final 10 minutes of totality, it says to check for the following. Some of these things are measurable, some of these things are subjective, some things they want you to pay attention to so that you can describe them. Are, okay, number one, are any planets or bright stars visible? It's, well, the sky is still blue. If you know where to look, you'll be able to see Venus 15 or 10 minutes before totality. We saw it probably in that range when we were in Midland. But the thing is, you have to know where you're going to look. It is below and the lower part of where the sun and the moon are meeting, about 15 degrees, which is this much at arm's length. This second picture over here, some of our crew, the neighbors who came to the park said, "I see it, Venus." So everybody ran over to them and everybody was looking. And it's, you have to get your vision out to that distant vision and know the area you're looking at, and you look and you look, and then it pops into view. And it's, and you'll keep seeing it once you know where it is. Number two, in this category, any change in behavior or birds, birds or other, well, if you know, if you're looking for a change, you have to know what the baseline is. We went the evening before, we watched the birds flocking, flying to roost in the trees. We saw what happened, looked around to see if there was any other animals that we could observe. I didn't care to deal with fire ants, but these, here, you'll hear the peepers that peep in the evenings. They'll start peeping when the sky gets dark enough. Anybody raise chickens? Okay, what do they do when it starts getting dark? They do every time. And that's one of the only reports, one of the two reports that we've had from some people we've met, stories from their oral history about eclipses. What did they remember? The chickens went to bed in the middle of the day. Oh, there's our sound effects. Oh, the brightness of your sunlight, this is a measurable thing. You have to have a meter if you're going to do it or use your cellphone. There is an app called Light Meter. I hate to expose my iPhone sensors to the sun this way, but that is an option. A lighting engineer I talked to recommended an X-Tech meter. I bought one. It was easy to use. It will measure in lux or lumens. And I set it out on the table and either wrote down the reading at a certain time or I got, when it got real busy, I'd just take a picture of it with my phone and I had that to record my data. Have any of you measured light in eclipses? Okay, just wondering. So another question that they ask in this challenge is what colors or shades seem odd? Well, what choices do you have? What are you looking at? Are you on a barren field? Are you on rocky field? Is it grass or what? One thing you can do, and this is based on a color scheme, is have a red and a green side by side. This gives you a target of something to look at. You may not have a red something in your field, but as our eyes start getting dark adapted, the red light will start disappearing from our vision as it shifts into night vision. That's the first, one of the first changes you'll see, but if you don't have something red and something to compare it to, you don't know if it's gonna actually be a change. This is called a Perkinji effect. And that made me wonder, what if, is this the same thing like color blindness? I was just wondering. So I looked online and found these numbers things. Have y'all done this online? Do a, it's, it's interesting. And I found out that I couldn't see some of, some of the numbers or patterns. And it says I have a yellow-blue deficiency in that, and that's common to people who have cataracts, glaucoma, or macular degeneration. So if you have old eyes, you may have a different response in your answer, but what you wanna do is pay attention to what you see and how that you can report that. Can you see any naked eye sunspots? Now, this does not mean you don't use solar eclipse glasses. You have to look with your glasses. And people with, with young eyes, and this, this bugs me every time I see it, they'll say, "I can, I can see these pictures." So we'll have our sunspotter. We did this this afternoon and we, we could see one, one particularly large sunspot. And the kids would put on the glasses, they'd say, "I see it." I couldn't see it. Their parents couldn't see it. But if you have young eyes, you can see. Note these things, make a sketch of them. And then the second category of things to look for. Describe what occurs in the last five minutes before the beginning of totality. The first question is, is there any change in temperature? So you have to know what your baseline temperature is. Alan, I want to ask you, being meteorologist you are, how is the best way for us to set up a thermometer for measuring temperature during the eclipse? Okay, in the shade, because Weather Bureau, don't they have a shaded ventilated place that they have a certain elevation above? Okay, that's good to know. Okay, and if you didn't hear that, he said, "Just put it in the shade." And so you want your temperature, any particular height off the ground? Okay. Ideally, ideally over green grass. Oh, you can write down or you can, if you have a logging device, use that, or you can take photographs at a certain interval. You can graph it and, and get your temperature versus time, and this will satisfy that requirement. It's not hard, it's just knowing what to do. Oh, and let me back up. Have you ever had a problem reading your screen in the sunlight? This was a major problem for me. I wound up putting my display inside a black bag so I could look in there and see, but the glare can be an enormous thing. And if you're not aware of that, practice before you do any of this, so you won't have those hidden things. I had a tiny weather station. I did not put it in the trees, that's off in the distance. It worked for me. And it asked about, does winds or wind direction or speed vary? It was a windy day to begin with. There was a front coming through. It was chilly. Carl complained, he wished he'd brought his beanie. And, and it was so windy that the music stand, holding his easel up, blew over. And people were asking you, why, what does charcoal bags have to do with the eclipse? Well, it didn't have anything to do with the eclipse, but it held our music stand in place. So one of our friends went home and brought the bags back to, and this is a good time to say, yeah, a good time to say, practice your eclipse routine if you're going to do an observation series. Get all of your stuff together, go out, practice, see what that little, that one thing that will stop your whole train of action. Get it all together, make a written plan. Number three, just before totality, do you see shadow bands? How many of you have seen shadow bands? Two, three, four? They don't happen with every eclipse. You have to know where to look for them, like on a white car, a white house, a piece of ground cloth like this is. These are not wrinkles on, on a piece, on a sheet. Those are gray bands that appear to move like the ripples in the bottom of a swimming pool. You've seen those in the summer. These are similar. They start at either about 90 seconds, 60 seconds, 30 seconds before totality. But don't spend all your time looking for them. You'll want to be looking up because a lot is happening up. If you have a video camera, you can put on that, you can catch it that way. The, they may or may not happen. They start one direction before, after totality, they come back and they'll go in the opposite direction. Sir? What causes the bands? It's a thing in the atmosphere about the change, Carl, the changing of the atmosphere as it cools? Go a different direction.
Did we get an answer? I was figuring it was like the slit lamp experiment.
Okay, Carl was, Carl was explaining that it related to the density of the atmosphere, change in density and refraction. Uh, sorry, you people out there in Zoom can't hear the conversation that goes on here in the meeting. We'll try to repeat what the answers are. Yeah. Okay, they're easiest to see on, on a white surface. Number four, just before totality, do you see the shadow coming over distant hills or other features? This is partly going to depend on where you're set up for viewing. Anybody seen this one? You have? Where were you? Were you out in the desert or here or? Okay, did it come real fast at you? Away. Okay, what was your experience? Okay. Okay, John says it looks like a storm front coming through, kind of dark. I haven't seen this, so I'm, I'm trying to learn what to look for. Number five, if you didn't know that there was an eclipse, would you expect one? The annular eclipse was one that I had this same question. If I had been inside, I don't think I would have noticed it. It only got to 90%. But if you look at this graph, you see for about the first hour, there's gonna be very little change in the, the light. And it gets to the last 30 minutes, things start happening more rapidly. At this point in the curve, you'll see midday shade. Your eyes are going to adapt from the beginning to this point. And so you're not really aware of that, but start watching the shadows. Shadows get otherworldly, unnatural. At the middle of the curve there, an overcast day, well, we're used to that. But then, in the last seven minutes or so, it's going to increase more rapidly. In the last one minute, it's like a curtain being drawn over you, that the, the light gets that, that low. Okay, the third category is now we're at totality. Describe what you see where the sun once stood. John has good poetry that describes his totality experiences. Just, just take in the moment. You don't have to write anything down. Take in the moment and it's a, it's something you experience inside. You won't be the same person after totality. It's what you think about it. Yeah. And it'll change, change you for good. It'll put you in your place in the universe. Number two, what color is the disk? Okay, this is open to interpretation. Which disk are they talking about? The moon or the sun's disk? Can't see much. What would you say? If you had to answer this question, I'm just curious. I hadn't decided how I'm gonna answer it either. Would you see any earth shine? Is there a chance of seeing earth shine? Okay, they photo. So dim, so dim. The corona itself is about as bright as the full moon is, and it's perfectly safe to look at that. Okay, well, photography brings out a lot more. This is another, another thing to remind you, if you haven't been in totality, when you're watching it with your eclipse glasses on and you notice everything around you is going dark, you take your glasses off. This is where the moon is hiding all of the harmful bright rays from the, the sun, and you get to enjoy this with your own eyes. Yes. You watch totality with your bare eyes. We've, we've seen reviews, reviews of eclipse glasses and they said, "I wore them the whole time, they didn't work. I couldn't see a thing." Well, you take your glasses off and you'll watch it for the duration of the time, depending on your locality. And when it's over, the moon starts shining through a little crevice and it gets real bright, real fast. John says it's like an arc welder starting up. It's, it's that bright. So what color is the disk? Choose your choice and that will be your answer. What color is the corona? A lot of the pictures we see have a black sky and that enhances the contrast for seeing the corona. The sky's not really truly black like night. It's a dark, silvery, blue, gray. It is dark. You have the feeling of nighttime, like a night with a full moon. Pay attention to this, because you'll be asked to, to write your answer. Number four, can you see any detail in the corona? I could never see anything this detailed. This comes with photo processing. We do not have Photoshop eyes and detail must be there if they can get it out of that, but I have never seen anything at this level of detail. Don't expect it like that. Enjoy it, but think, be, be aware of what you're seeing. The corona can be any, any variety of shapes, long, skinny, slender, sticking out the opposite sides, shaggy, symmetrical. It depends on the magnetic fields that the sun is putting out as to what the corona's gonna look like. And we'll probably see some predictions of what it's, it's gonna be as it gets a little closer to time. Corona means crown also. And there's a beer named Corona. Yeah, the spiky on the, okay. Okay, number five, right on the disk, check for smaller reddish glows. Have you been able to see these visually without your telescope? You have? You've noticed it? Okay. You can see the color, but not the details. Binoculars are good to use at this time. If you can see it with your eyes and it's safe, you have that little window where you can grab your binoculars and look at the, look at this. Uh, reddish glows, that's, comes from the chromosphere, which is part of the atmosphere of the sun, the reddish part. And with the solar maximum that the sun's approaching, we may very well see some interesting things. Some of the drawings that were done years and years ago before they had photography, had rays coming out, they had circles and blobs, and these have been interpreted as seeing a coronal mass ejection during a solar eclipse. And they're using old photos, old pictures, records from the ancients to try to correlate past eclipses with actually what were observed by people that were living at that time. Yes. Okay, the other thing you have to put on your sheet for the eclipse challenge is your total eclipse contact timings. Is everybody familiar with Xavier Jubier? He is one of the people that I have used the most in his eclipse times. This is a website, it's free. You put in your location, either by address or lat long or name, and you'll come up with all of the circumstances of the eclipse. It has two listings for the time. One is called total solar eclipse, that's in the upper right. This, this is for right here at the RRO. And it says, "We will have 3 minutes 47.4 seconds for total solar eclipse," but he has the lunar limb corrected time, which is 3 minutes 49.8 seconds. That takes into account that the, the moon is not a billiard ball, it has ragged edges and valleys, and also that the earth has altitude changes. And so there's some pretty rigorous mathematics going on in the calculations that they, they have done to make these. There are other places you can look to get your contact timings, and I'm sure all of those will, will suit you, okay? Oh, the blue line, yeah. Carl, Carl always tells me the things that I forget. Where it says start of total eclipse, C2. That's in a blue because I put my mouse over that and I let it hover and it came up with a little box right here. That is the lunar limb corrected time. That's a, a little thing that if you're very particular to the details, you need to know that. Okay, 3 seconds earlier. Mm-hmm, and that's about the difference between those two, the total solar eclipse and the lunar limb corrected. So we went. Correcting for the shape of the moon's shadow and the altitude of us here on earth. And then the irregularities also of the, the edge of the moon. That's what's involved with the silver level. The gold level is more challenging. I started it, but after the, the annular eclipse, but I really didn't have enough time because of all the outreach we're doing with our eclipse programs right now around the state. It involves the determining the Saros cycle. And, and I might do this, I really want to. This little rock up there, petroglyph tablet, the tablet from the ancient Babylonians, and they figured out the Saros cycle, which would predict when a, an eclipse of a similar geometry would happen. You've seen a map of the world that has these swoop, swoop, swoop and different things and you say, "How do you, how can they make sense of what's going on with all these different eclipses?" And they found that in a certain period, one would repeat and repeat and repeat. And that's what's called a Saros series. It lasts 18 years, 11 days, or 11.3 days. It's not a perfect number, so you can't write it on your calendar. It's gonna happen in your house, at your house. The 18 years, 11 days would make it happen at your house, but those other hours will put it eight time zones around the world from you. And it takes three series to go all the way around the world. At the fourth one, it's a, it's called an exilegiumos. The, and the, the Saros series begins either at the north pole or the south pole, and it very gradually spirals down across the planet and will end at the opposite pole, but it takes about 12 to 13 centuries for that cycle to happen. And there's more than one. I think there's 39 currently that are, are interleaved with each other. And this is Saros number 139 of this cycle that we have right now. They, the Babylonians and the Chinese, both independently, were able to calculate the Saros. Edmund Halley rediscovered it in the 1700s, and he predicted an eclipse that happened within four minutes and 19 miles of his location. He crowdsourced people, he sent out flyers and let me know if you're in eclipse, send me your location. And he was able to get the people's help to strengthen his moon, the path of the moon's travel. This, I don't want to go too much more into this. It takes six months, a longer span is preferred to do this. You have a, a time of, you have to chart a minimum of four moon positions each month for a minimum of 24 total positions that will need to be accomplished, the task at hand. More will lead you to greater accuracy. The moon positions can also be done before or after the eclipse, but this is a key thing. You do it including the eclipse and you'll know where the eclipse actually happens. And you chart this on a, a chart, a Skype, your Sky Maps. And you have to include all your data with your moon positions, whether they're sketched or photographed, your calculations that you determine your, your period of the Saros cycle. And you have six months till you do it. So if you're planning on attempting the silver or the gold, you need to start with your plan just real soon. And that's what the Astronomical League has for us. It doesn't, it's not hard to do the silver. It sharpens your eyes, even if you don't submit your. It, uh, sharpens your eyes, even if you don't submit your, uh, observations. It will sharpen your sensory perception and your awareness of what's happening. Any questions? Yeah. That's it's gone now. One that I used in twenty seventeen was called Solar Eclipse Timer, SCT. It, it's a, it's really good. Uh, it's uh, free download, but you have to choose your eclipse and it's a couple of bucks. And it's worth a couple of bucks because time will get away from you faster than you, you can believe. Um, and I, I want to see all of your pictures when y'all, those of you who are going to photograph it. Anything else? Well, Michael, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Any verbal questions, uh, from people out in Zoomland?
Yes, how do you chart the position of the moon? Are you supposed to have a
You have
Orion deck or what?
You have your pictures or your sketches and you look on a star chart. And you want to take the stars that are brightest that you can see and find them on your star chart and use it that way. Um,
Oh, okay.
Oh, if, when you're dealing with the sidereal month, you'll want to find a bright star so you can come back to that one. And, oh, I neglected to say that the Saros, what, what happens is that you've got three different cycles that overlap. And the eclipse happens when these three, um, it's like a slot machine, um, come to the right time together. You have the new moon to new moon, which is the synodic month. You have the anomalistic month, which is, uh, ascending node through descending node and back to ascending mode, node. And then you have the, uh, the other one is perigee to perigee. And when those, those three cycles are slightly different and it makes the, uh, nodes process westward along the, the plane of, uh, the moon's orbit. Any other questions? Well, thank you all very kindly. Right here, okay. Uh, they help you, they give you references? Yeah. Yeah, Astronomical League has, it's, it's a guided study. Yeah, it's a guided study, step by step. They help you and some of it's basic, some of it is intermediate. And there are advanced, um, studies that you can do with this. And you, you get a certificate of completion if you send it in. You send it into Rocky and then he'll forward it on.
All right, now, thank you, Darcy. Uh, Darcy and Carl have been preparing the Arkansas for this, uh, total eclipse for several years now, yes?
Oh, sorry, I had one more question for Darcy, is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Um, yes, thanks, thanks, Darcy, wonderful. Um, I just want to make sure because I was late. Is it in fact okay to look for Venus next to the sun, uh, without the sun? You know, the solar plate detecting glasses?
It's not that close to the sun.
It's not that close, okay.
Yeah, uh, this, yeah, it's fifteen degrees, which is your, your first and last fingers extended our arms length, that distance. And you'll, you can shade your eyes from the sun and see it. And this, uh, meeting will be recorded and it's on YouTube. Is that right where it goes afterwards?
Oh, great, thank you so much, thanks.
I was going to say that they've been working at this so long, I'm sure they're going to sleep for several months after the eclipse. So make sure that if you don't hear from them, they're probably quite healthy. They're just catching up on their nap time. Wow, that's a lot. All right, well, our next person up is, uh, Rocky Tony. And Rocky is going to talk about, which constellation you're doing, Rock?
Coma Bernisus.
Okay, Coma Bernisus. All right, and that's our constellation of the month. Yeah, Rocky's got, he does, he's got it up there.
Okay. Are you ready?
Are you? All right, are you sharing your screen, Rocky?
Yeah, I think so, is it not up there?
Oh, we don't see it quite yet here. All right, just bear with us.
I see it over here.
We're trying to get it up on the screen here. All right, Rocky, you, you've got the floor, buddy. And by the way, we all want to say, uh, happy getting better, Rocky. Uh, Rocky had a little medical issue and he's feeling a lot better, so that's good, good news.
Okay, um, well, thi- this is, uh, is a, uh, back in eighteen twenty-four, they, uh, they published a set of thirty-two cards named Uranus Mirror. And, uh, uh, this is, this is the one that has Corona Borealis on it. And you can see it's got Boates and Canis Vinicii. I guess that's qua- quadratus up there above Boates, which is no longer a constellation, but it has a meteor shower tied to it. So, uh, uh, it looks more like the thing from, uh, the Addams Family, I think, uh, on this. But before there was, uh, Coma Bernisus, uh, the Coma Bernisus ta- cluster was the li- Tale of the Lion, uh, Tale of Leo the Lion, uh, Nescia. But, uh, I read this book, uh, as, I think it's been about ten years ago. I've given this presentation outdated at some, but it's been a long time ago. But, uh, Bern- Bernisus hair, and it goes through the story of, of Queen Berenika of Cyrenica. And, uh, uh, she was pretty fascinating. But anyway, um, the story goes that, uh, she, her first husband was, um, I don't remember his name now. Demetrius the Fair. Anyway, Demetrius the Fair wasn't a very good husband and she was the queen of Cyrenica. And so, um, uh, after he got, after he mistreated some of her subjects, she ran him through with a spear. Uh, but anyway, about a year later, a couple of years later, uh, Ptolemy the Third became king of Egypt and then he married Queen Berenika a year later. So she was married to King, so she moved to Alexandria, Egypt and was the queen of King Ptolemy the Third. Uh, Aristote, um, but, oh, let me continue with the story. And, um, anyway, he went off to a, a war, uh, Syrian, Third Syrian War, Ta- the Ptolemies versus Seleucids. If you remember your history, um, uh, after Alexandria the Great, all his generals took sections of the kingdom. And one of them was Seleucid and one of them was Egypt and P- Ptolemy's real Egypt. Uh, but anyway, he went off to war and she, she liked him so much or loved him so much that she told the gods, if they returned him safely, that, that she would give her, uh, blonde hair. She would cut off her blonde hair and donate it to the gods. And she, she was, uh, pretty and had long blonde hair. But anyway, uh, when he returned, she did just that and she but, put it in the, uh, temple of Athena. And, um, and the next day, her hair was gone. And they were trying to find out who stole her hair, where her hair went. Well, the, the court astronomer, one of the astronomers, there were, this was Alexandria, so there was more than one. But anyway, his name was Conan. And he said, uh, he showed him Bernisus cluster or the, what we know now as Coma Bernisus cluster, uh, to, to the king and queen and said, Athena liked your, your tribute so much that they put it in the sky. And so, um, there was a, uh, historian named Calamachus and he wrote poetry about that. And so that's why we named it, uh, that's why they named it Coma Bernisus, that, which means the hair of Bernice. Um, but this got a pretty interesting history. Uh, Alexander captured Cyrene in three thirty-two and it goes on the Library of Alexandria was started in two ninety-seven B.C. Um, the Colossus of Rhodes is mentioned in the book because I think they, they took a trip over to it. I've got a map showing you where it is in a second. Uh, Conan and Aristoteles were born, uh, Cyrene, by the way, is what, where Libya is now, uh, is in Libya. But, um, okay, I'm gonna go on, we don't, we don't need the rest of that history. So here's a map showing where, where the things I've mentioned are. Uh, Cyrene is Alexandria, Egypt is in the Nile Delta. And Cyrene is, is in Libya, it's where Benghazi is. And Benghazi is, uh, uh, some kind of a, supposed to be some kind of distortion of Queen Berenika, Berenice. Starts with the same le- two letters, but other than that, it doesn't sound like it. Um, Rhodes is, uh, this little island right here, uh, off the coast of Turkey, it looks like. And, but it was a Greek island at the time and that's where the Colossus of Rhodes was. And, uh, Syene, which we'll talk about in a minute, where Aristote- Aristoteles used a, a well in Cyrene to establish the circumference of the earth. Anyway, here's, there, this was a real person. There were two, two people, uh, that constellations are named after. Uh, does anybody know the other one? The other one's, uh, Scutum. Uh, it was named after the shield of a, a Polish king by an astronomer trying to gain favor. Um, but anyway, uh, uh, so there are actually coins of Queen Berenika now. Aristoteles was one of her contemporaries and he was the librarian, main librarian at the, uh, at the Library of Alexandria. But anyway, he, he determined the circumference of the earth. There was a well in Syene, which is where Aswan is now. Um, that when the sun reached it on, on midsummer's day, when the sun was farthest north, it shone, it shone in the bottom of the well and that was the only day it, it did. So, so he was able to, uh, measure the angle between the, of the sun at that time. And he knew that the sun was straight over this well. And so that's how he determined it within several hundred miles, which is pretty remarkable. These, uh, you know, nowadays we have astronomers and we have mathematicians and stuff like that, it seems like. But back then, a scientist had a lot of different professions. He was not just an astronomer, he was a mathematician, geographer, that says here musician, poet. Conan was the same. Uh, uh, that's about Calamachus writing the original poetry. But Conan of Samos, the one who, 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 uh, said that, um, the Coma Bernisus cluster was her hair. He, he was also a scientist and, and worked with, uh, um, Archimedes. And, uh, he's probably where we get the name cone for a cone because that's, if you remember, Archimedes developed a spiral and conic sections to, uh, uh, pump water or, or make pumps. Hydraulic principles. Okay, here's how you find, uh, Coma Bernisus. Uh, you can start with the Big Dipper and, uh, uh, and you can find a Corcorali, which is a, a second magnitude star in Canis Vinicii. And it's a, a pair of stars and so it's pretty easy to identify. And, uh, the tail of the line, Denabola. And you can see that the cluster is about halfway in between it. The constellation is made up of, of three not very bright stars, prob- probably fourth, fourth, between fourth and fifth magnitude. You can see them on a dark night. I usually find them by, by finding this cup of Virgo right here. And know, I know that the, one of them's right above, uh, that side of the cup. Um, but if you reme- I'll just go through a couple of things real quick here to, uh, of course, you use the handle of the Big Dipper to make an arc to arc terrace and speed on to Spica. And then the rest of your summer, your spring diamond, you add Denabola and Corcorali. Uh, but you can see this cluster naked eye, if you've got reasonable skies. Uh, and you know, kind of look between these two stars. It's really nice in binoculars. Oh, here, and here's just, uh, another thing. You can see all, and one of the things that Coma Bernisus and Virgo are, are famous for is all the galaxies. It's, uh, that are in them. And there's, there's like eight meas- measurers objects in Coma Bernisus alone. And here they are, one, uh, there's one globular cluster. And David Hegel, by the way, I, I was going to announce that, that he got his globular cluster Astronomical League award today, I think, uh, in the mail. And, um, uh, I remember this, about this time, there, there are hardly any globular clusters in the winter sky. The first two are this fifty-three in Coma Bernisus and M3 in Canis Vinicii. And those are, those are the two I started with when I did my globular cluster award and had to kind of wait till summer or wait till later in the night to, uh, finish it. Um, but you can see, uh, I've got pictures of most of these. Uh, Malat one eleven is also the Coma Bernis cluster. Uh, and binocular objects are, um, M11, Coma Bernisus, M53 and M64. And the rest of them pretty much needed a telescope. And here's just a picture of the Coma Bernisus cluster of the queen's hair. It's about two hundred eighty light years away. Uh, it covers, it's, it's pretty big, covers about seven point five degrees of the sky. M53 cluster, uh, uh, is a nice little cluster, right, right by one of the stars in Canis Vinicii. I mean, in, uh, Coma Bernisus. And it's, um, uh, fifty-eight thousand light years away. And then here's a couple of the clas- uh, galaxies, some pretty neat galaxies. M64, the Black Eye Galaxy, M85, M88, M91, M91, I think is a, uh, uh, barred spiral galaxy. See the bar coming through the middle? M98, M99, M100. Um, and, uh, there's an SO is one of the galaxies, but the rest of them are pretty much spirals in this, in this neighborhood. And, uh, one of the hard things about the measurer award is to see all these galaxies because they're a little dimmer than most of the, most of the other, uh, uh, measurers objects. And, uh, I remembered, I did it a long time ago, but I had a chart like this and somebody told you how to And somebody told you how to, how to go through it. And where, where they are, are they, they, they're between Vinda Matrix, which is the top star of, uh, one of the ma- one of the bright stars in Virgo and Denabola, you can see they go right between them. And, uh, and it kind of start out with a, a little arrow right here and then start just, start hopping through one after another. But with the Mezzier Award, I think, I think you still have to do everything by star hopping. So that, that was fun, I've done it, done it several times now. And this chart is in, in our book, Learning the Constellations, to help you do it if you ever decide to do it. And this is Marcarien's Chain, which is a fascinating area. Uh, John, John, I know John Reed and, and a lot, and a lot of have taken pictures of it. Well, we had a guy, when I wrote my book for the first time, uh, a guy by the name of Wade Van Arsdale was a member. And, um, he, uh, had one of the observatories there and he took some really nice pictures. And I asked him to take this picture for me and he took it of, uh, Marcarien's Chain. And you can see, there's, I thought, three or four, three Mezzier objects and the rest of them are, are N G C objects. That's it. Any questions?
Yep, they're all galaxies.
Are they all somehow related to each other or they just happen to be in a line?
Well, there's a lot of galaxies in this area of the sky and part of it's because, um, I don't, there's not a lot of Milky Way and dust and stuff like that that like block our summer skies. Uh, and that, I think that's why, cause we're looking out the Milky, out the galaxy instead of across it.
Right. And it's, they're part of the Virgo Cluster and some are related and some aren't, they're just.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a pair, um, called the Mice that are, that have, actually have a lot of tails and stuff. I had a pic, I saw a picture of it when I was getting ready for this. Uh, and I'm not, I can find out about those, but those are related. I, I know there's some related that, that are gonna crash into each other or, or whatever. Like we're supposed to do with Andromeda in, uh, quite a, quite a few years.
About three, three and a half billion, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot how, how many.
Yes, I believe she will, thank you, Alan, Alan pointed out that Darcy will have a program. Something like that, yes. We'll pass through you, no, no crashing. All right, well, thank you very much, Rocky.
Yeah.
All right, so we've come to the end of our, uh, scheduled program. Are there any, anyone have any, uh, projects that they're undertaking right now that they would like to present to the club? It is complete? Wow, I thought it was gonna take until Andromeda merged with the Milky Way. No, so John said he has completed the sundial. When do you think, uh, John, you, you will have it brought out here to install? Okay, so John says before the next meeting, we may have our sundial here. So that would be something very nice to see. Anybody else?
It's fairly stable now, there didn't have much problems with it. Anybody who wants to practice, uh, doing some photography, the R R T is available to any club member.
Yeah, I, I did see the one that you posted of the, uh, Crab Nebula and you've taken a few more since then? Okay, good. So that is a great resource that's available to club members. I'm also gonna remind, remind people that we do have a telescope loan program. We have six telescopes that can be, anyone in the club can take, take them home, use them here. And, uh, I think the best of the lot is a beautiful eight inch, uh, go-to Dobsonian. Literally you point it at a star, tell it what star it is and then you push in any other object, it will go to it automatically. So, and we will, myself and several other people are, uh, volunteered to be mentors. We will teach people how to use those telescopes and then you can play with them on your own. Anything else? Yes. Well, why don't you introduce yourself to the?
Jennifer, hi everyone, I'm very, 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 very new at this. I have a telescope, but it's like a beginner telescope. So I'm really excited to be here.
Again, anyone in the club who has a telescope that they're not very sure of how to operate it properly, please go on to our group's I O, uh, website or our platform. We have on there a group called Mentorship or Mentor and ask for help. And people will help you do that, that's why we have it. All right, if there's nothing further, then I'm going to close this meeting. And, uh, we're gonna be starting to look forward to this eclipse coming up. And I believe we have one meeting before that, is, do we have a meeting before the eclipse now? Is it after? It's after, so, it's after. So if it's after the eclipse, bring pictures and we can all share them around. All right, thank you very much and I now close the meeting.